I'm sure that's probably the only person that has this link, but it's not her name. They brought her on the table. It's good enough for my board?
This is our new system.
No, it's not.
Never run.
All right, thank you so very much. Welcome you this evening to our August August ninth work session. Uh, it's, we're still working on our technology upgrade, so we appreciate your patience and we appreciate your presence in joining us here this evening. We're going straight into our public agenda. And I see seven names who have signed up. And I will call you in order that you appear. On our agenda, Ms. Teresa Alene, Ms. Whitney Thompson, Barbara Scope, Gayle Payne, Grace LeGuire, Marvin Rockwater Senior, and Gillian Goofer-Goldberg. Ms. Teresa Alene. See her, Ms. Whitney Thompson.
She's not here.
Barbara Scope. As you're coming to the podium, all official meetings of the board shall be open to the press and the public, however, the board may meet in executive session. Citizens are encouraged to address items on the board agenda or to initiate presentations of issues appropriate to the board for consideration. The board meeting is not the appropriate place to review individual employee performance or individual parent complaints that have not been addressed by the responsible or superintendent. Citizens are encouraged, following all channels, to address such problems, which is emailing the superintendent's office through his Karen Jones executive assistants or calling the superintendent's office or his Karen Jones. Ms. Barbara Scope. You have five minutes.
Hi, I'm here. I started a website. It's www.momsagainstmilitarymasking.com. Um, you all think I started it because I'm a cold-hearted enemy. No, I started it in order to prevent what had happened in this last week. Mask wasn't able to attend school on Friday, wasn't even able to step into school today, and it's just not allowed to go. He also hasn't been denied access to his public education. He can do nothing, not even virtual schooling has an option because he's healthy. He's a healthy, happy, adorable little boy that wants to go to school, that learned to speak. He didn't even talk until he was five years old because he's autistic. He went to your special needs pre-K last year downtown and he learned how to talk. He learned how to go to bathroom on his own. He was so terrified, he was so terrified to do it. And he did it because of your teachers and your paraprofessionals then. Now, now that after you promised me, and I cried, I cried in the office many times, like, oh my God, someone's gonna help me, someone's gonna help me help him. And they said, yes ma'am, we are, we are, we're gonna be there for you. And Dr. Lewis says, no. No, we're not. Because when I asked, okay, what are the educational options being made for the kids that aren't allowed to go to school if their parents don't want to put a mask on them? My kid just learned to speak six months, six months ago, and has reverted twice in his life, that year, we've lost years. So I'm not putting a mask on my autistic child that just learned to speak. And guess what? He didn't wear a mask all last year. In your school district with mandatory masking, he did not wear a mask, nor did his 70-year-old something teacher, and yours and his paraprofessional. Because if they have special needs and special needs for kids, they don't have to. But apparently, if we're helping anywhere else, just, I don't know, we're spreading something. I don't, I don't even know anymore because you guys haven't bothered to take the opportunity to educate the public. What are the numbers? What, how many kids do we have registered? Actually, what's our graduation rate? If you look up demographics right on Muscogee County homeschool page, nothing's been updated since 2017. So maybe instead of making medical decisions for my kid, and ensuring my kid didn't even have a virtual option this year to not attend. Catherine didn't get to go to school today either. She's nine years old and fourth grade, so excited to go to her zone school finally. We weren't even going. I volunteered half days at the St. Mary's because we couldn't go there the first year we moved here. We couldn't go to Dawson, okay, I'll volunteer my time. Then they go to Demon. I'm not even allowed in the class. I didn't even meet the teacher. I've never saw inside any of those classes. Not once was I allowed in. I volunteered every single day here in Muscogee County. I know there are teachers that double tritons, that ego-riddled, and panic. And this is insane. I've been so involved in this community every single time we moved here. And when I email you and I say, doctor, what are, where are my kids going by May, Wednesday, and Friday? Where, where are they going to school? Where are they going on the first day of school? Please refer to my last email. Your email said, they will go to school and comply to our mask mandates, or they won't be allowed in. Or homeschool them. I'm not rich. I can't put them in the private schools like all you can afford. I can't, I don't have those resources. So I have to rely on Muscogee County School District. And still, you don't let my kid go in. You don't let the happy, healthy, normal kid go in, and you don't let a happy, healthy, other, normal kid go in. You have made sure that nobody had an option, forced masking, or no education. That's disgusting. You don't know what you've done to my family. I emailed you, I called you, you've ignored me, you've gaslit me, and you've done it all on purpose. You've pushed me around. I've called everybody. No one's coming to save my kids but me. So I'm maybe the bad person. I'm called the Karen in town. I live on the South Side where they all hate me because they've all been told we got a mask outside even. The community is in Stockholm syndrome, and not anyone on the medical board or within the school board where we, where we educate people is willing to stand up and say, hey, let's just really look at the numbers. Okay, come on, click. Yes, yes, let's protect our elderly. But be happy, you're gonna have to do that. Yes, yes, let's protect our autoimmune. Of course, let's do that. But then to just leave my children out with so many more that aren't willing to come up here because honestly, they don't have the ability to be attacked 24/7 like me. Thank you Naomi, thank you girl, I've seen all you've talked about me. You make sure to keep my kids out of the school as well. We see everything you guys say on these school board meetings. You can keep them four hours long and you can make sure there's no comments on them. You can keep comments turned off on Facebook and all of it, but we're still gonna talk. And now you're stuck with me because I'm not rich like you guys. I don't have money for private schools. So just like I'm stuck with you, you're stuck with me. And I'm staying, I'm staying enrolled. I'm not homeschooling because I can't. I already homeschooled my two teenagers because of your family. Look at your graduation rates. Because you guys get to, but I don't.
Thank you, Ms. Scope. Gillian Payne.
Good afternoon, board.
Good afternoon.
I'm Gillian Payne, and, um, my question is, when a child comes into this classroom in the morning, will you let them change their masks during the day? Do they change their masks during the day? Do they sneeze and run into the rotoses in this? And do they breathe in and out germs all day long? Yes, they do. I think Muscogee has enough money for these kids that if mommas and daddies send their child to school, they should, with a mask, they could at least provide a mask to be changed every two hours. Because there was a lady on a website, and I can give that to you later, that she took, she collected all these masks, and she found out that there was staphylococcus, streptococcus, pneumonia, there was so many I can't even name. But these were in the mask, and these kids were breathing them in and out. So if our children have to wear the mask, then why not you guys, or the school, I'm sorry, the school, have to change them? They should change every two hours, and then they'll provide them masks, put on plenty masks. You know, when kids go out and play, do they still, they don't get to go out and play or do things, activities? Okay, when they go out and play, they get hot and sweaty, and they have, they're breathing in and out of germs. And it's not right for them to have to wear these masks all day. It's not healthy. It is not healthy. Okay, my next, my next one is, I know that, um, CRT is not going to be taught in our schools. And I appreciate that so much. But how do we know that there's not a liberal teacher in the classroom that is not going to impress her thoughts on these impressive children? That teachers, just like my teachers, have me all day long. I learn how to say thank you and no thank you and be polite. Because my mom was a single mom, and she didn't have to have her teacher teach me all these, these things that I needed to know. So where is, is that possible? How would you, how can you tell if a teacher is doing this? That's all I'd like to know, is how can you be sure that a teacher is not putting her impression on a child or any of our children? We don't have a way of knowing because I understand that there's no volunteers anymore, parents. Is that true? That the parents aren't allowed to come to school anymore and volunteer? Has that, is that true or not true? Anyone know?
Ms. Scope just said she volunteers.
Okay, okay, but she's not allowed, she's not allowed to come in?
Not under the parent's permission.
Okay, all right. Then I guess I'm blurred. But I know I saw a movie one time, and it had a Terrence Mann, and it was the Field of Dreams, and this man had wrote a book in the 60s, and he was so appalled. What he wrote after he become an adult was, he was like in his teens. And he was hiding because he was so ashamed, he wouldn't even go outside anymore. I remember all this to come back and call the teachers because they've done something to our children, and they can take it back because it's quite a two-place. Once you get it out, you can't put it back in. I don't want our, our, these kids are our future. And I pray to God that they're being taught a Christian way. I know that it's probably not, not, probably not right when you say Christian way, but I hope and pray that they're being taught manners and respect and loving each other. I thank you for the time.
Thank you, Ms. Payne.
I do want to clarify, we do not have our masks mandated outdoors. That was lifted back today, and that has not been advised by the medical panel or any other advisory group, so we do not have masks outdoors.
And also regarding history, um, history has always been taught in school. I think the acronym CRT or Critical Race Theory is being weaponized. And I'm speaking as Pat Hughley-Green about, uh, historical instruction, cultural instructions, and all of our teachers are trained and expected to deliver the, the instruction according to the way it's prescribed by the Georgia Department of Education. And I imagine that public education, like any other industry or any other field, the individual who are performing any service or teaching students or doing accounting all operate from the perspective and the lives based on which they have lived. And so, just want to make sure we are clear on that, that our students, since the beginning of time, have been taught history and social studies. The challenge is for us to make sure that it's accurate and complete history. So our next, uh, person is Mr. Grace LeGuire.
Um, Ms. Jones received an email saying he did not want me to speak.
Okay. Mr. Marvin Rockwater Senior.
Good afternoon. Good early evening.
Good afternoon.
Because it's not 6 o'clock. Madam Chair, board members, Superintendent Dr. Lewis, Department Chiefs, Counselor, Administrator Staff, and your tremendous ITT and the citizens. My name is Marvin Rockwater Senior, a citizen of this community for 19 years. It is with a profound respect that I address this august body of educators, elected and appointed leaders. This morning, I told the 80-year-old resident of my intention to speak to the board tonight. His words were, they are not going to listen to you, Mark. My retort was, I do not believe that, sir, because leaders listen. To humbly begin, I would first like to say, I am not an educator. However, I am a leader who understands what a minefield and conflict looks like, as I have lived both several times. Yes, I'm not an educator, but I have raised two lifelong educators because I believe it to be a noble profession with an enormous amount of rewards as educators. Effect and change lives in a positive manner every single day. Your mission to educate while harnessing the safety of our children is a most difficult and laboring task. And I salute as well as applaud all of you for your efforts. I am here this evening to address two concerns. First, it is to ask that you adjust your appropriation of the American Rescue Plan to include a subsidy of no less than $2,000 for all of your employees, from the custodian worker to the bus driver to the cafeteria staff. In my humble opinion, in my humble, in my humble opinion, your educational house, our schools, have become a combat zone with an enemy we can't see. In the military, we call this paid apparatus, duty pay. Members receive it while in a combat zone. A combat zone is defined as a forward part of a theater of military operations extending from the front lines to the full boundary of a communications zone. It would be appropriate to call the front lines of education today a combat zone. The administrative staff, the bus driver, the custodian worker, the cafeteria staff, the receptionist, the counselor, the nurse, and of course, the teacher. All positions will visit this combat zone on a daily basis during the school year. Secondly, I would ask that you reconsider your current proposals of 9% of the total amount of the American Rescue Plan funds for mental health, at-risk population, family engagement, PPE, and assess. I would ask that you consider at least 10% is totally dedicated to your at-risk population. Pre-COVID research data shows that at-risk students were one to two grades behind before COVID. As a youth mentor of this community, I see this all the time. I would venture to say, many of you would agree that in-person learning is the best setting for a great number of our students, especially the at-risk population. Please imagine what another year of school closures would do to the emotional behavior and the learning loss gap of our most vulnerable students. 30 seconds? Okay, okay. All I'm asking, Madam Chair, but I said this to you. Your at-risk students, I deal with these every weekend, every weekend. If we go another year not putting money in our community for our at-risk students, you're gonna have more behavioral problems than you do now. We have the money, but you gotta use it. You have to use it. And all you know about the media, African proper, it takes a village. This is three cheers, sisters. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, sir. Ms. Emily, go forth.
I'm gonna slide this off because I can't talk. And I promise, um, good evening, first of all.
Good evening.
I, um, I'm not gonna get into my background, but it is in education and behavioral health. Uh, I've been blessed to stay home with my children. Last year, my son attended Dr. Churchill's elementary church, which is where he is this year, and we're thrilled. He has done nothing but thrive since we have been here. I have served 27 years of active duty for this country. And I am standing here now because of the freedoms that my husband fought for and the millions of others. What are we doing? I ask every one of you, what are we doing? The scientific evidence does not point to putting a mask on healthy children. The psychological effects that these will have, the, the effects that I, my son is high academic in. He was on virtual last year. I made that decision because I didn't want him in a mask. Because there are studies after studies after studies, three specifically, that were funded by the NIH, that they refuse to recognize and look at now. The information coming out of our CDC is counterfactual. I am not saying remove the option. I would be standing here talking to you today if you had banned them altogether because I believe in the right of the parent to choose what is best for their children. I had no intention of coming here today, none. I would be nothing but thrilled. I'm a daughter of a long line of educators. And my grandfather was huge on all of the rules and orders. Stand up, stick up, shut up, sit down. But I ask you, I ask you, as a momma, to please look at the evidence yourself. I understand you have wonderful medical professionals. I get it. I trust medical professionals. I'm 45 years old. But in 45 years, I have never seen this country respond in a manner that it has. And it is headed in a very dangerous position, place. I don't want to think about what these very children are going to have to face in the future. My daughter got out of the car, four years old. I elected to put her in your school system in pre-K. As she's getting out of the car this morning for her second day, and I've already heard the words, but mommy, I can't breathe with it all. She is healthy. She is happy. Not every child is as fortunate as my children are. They come to school to see those faces. They are social fused with facial expression. I don't know what it's going, we will not eradicate this virus. And anyone who has any common sense understands that. We all understand that. It is, it is going to be around. We have to learn to live with it. But we can't damage our kids in the process. I beg you to please, this is a number. This is the reason we're putting face masks on our children. 73 million children in this country. 73 million, 335 have died from this virus. We don't know the co-mittatives that existed. This is no reason, no reason whatsoever to be putting masks on our children. They are grimey, they're dirty, they're filthy, they're nasty, they just are. But you have to think about the psychological development. My child can't even smile. I can't even see a smile on her face the first day of school. And as she's getting out of the car, they're too busy for her to sanitize her hands instead of saying, good morning. I'm happy to see you. I'm ready to learn. What are we doing?
Ms. Stoneford, your time is up. We really appreciate your time. Thank you to all of the speakers who wanted to come, and I'm sure will continue to reach out to us. We appreciate um, your input, and we take this time at all of our public meetings to hear from the public. We have a presentation coming up.
Madam Chair, I need to recuse myself from the room.
Yes, ma'am. 3.01, what was Tax Allocation District, commonly referred to as TAD.
Uh, we have Mr. Wright, I believe, and his representatives here to make a presentation to the board.
Thank you, Mr. Superintendent, Madam Chairman, and other members of the board. I'm not gonna take up my five minutes trying to explain what we're gonna do myself. But we do have Jeff Hossie here, who put our TAD presentation together. Uh, he's already presented to our city council approved TAD. Now we're coming for the school board to explain what we're trying to do down in South Columbus uh, with, uh, with property that we have down here. So, Jeff?
Thank you, Dr. Wright. Appreciate the opportunity to address you all, uh, this afternoon, this evening. Again, I am president of KD Advisory Group. You've known us in the past, you knew us lately, advisory group. We changed our names recently. Same people do the same thing, but we have been involved in the Columbus TAD program for a long time. Uh, we have written all the TAD plans, the government tasks, that have been approved by the city council as well as the the City Council as well as this body. So we always appreciate the opportunity to, to come and present another TAD. As you know, TADS are in part and parcel to the city's economic development strategies and goals. And we're talking tonight about TAD number eight, which is the South Columbus River District TAD. And as you can see here, there's, this TAD has been through a process, well, the TAD redevelopment plan that I'll describe in just a minute. But the City Council created TAD number eight on December 15th of 2020. So the TAD is up and running. And now the, the ask on the table of you all is, are you interested in participating in this TAD as well with the city in a similar way that you have in previous TADS? Again, not going to get too deep into, because of everyone's time, TADS, TADS have, have a lot of nuances, I think we can say. But just again, for those of you who haven't been involved in the discussions, what's going on in a TAD? And again, a TAD is really a, an economic development tool by which the city and the schools, when they're participating, are hoping to attract new development to areas that are lacking in development, lacking in infrastructure, lacking in jobs, lacking in housing. And so what happens is the base value gets locked in. By value, we're talking about, excuse me, about property taxes. So that's really what's in question here is the property taxes in the district. When a TAD is in place, the property taxes are locked in. And the, and that is first step in attracting new development. When new development comes and creates new property taxes, or what we call incremental change, positive new property taxes on the site, those new property taxes are funneled back into the district, into the TAD district in order to pay for infrastructure and other elements that allow the development to happen. So in other words, you can think of this as a public-private partnership whereby the private sector shows up to the TAD and says, "We're interested in developing, but we need a little help from the government." And so the public sector gets involved by pledging the new taxes that are being created into the district. And again, this is a little fuzzy, but from the city's website, this is a map of the seven TADS plus TAD number eight is shown in kind of the far, the northwest southwest corner. That's, that's TAD number eight boundaries that has been created, have been created. And you can see the other TADS throughout the city. So what happens with, with?
So which color was TAD number eight?
Is that the dark gold color?
Dark gold, right, in the southwest corner. Sorry about that. That should have put a circle around it. So, so here we have a cut, the cover of the, of the redevelopment plan that was approved in December by the City Council. This is the state law, this is what happens via the state law. In order to set up a TAD, a redevelopment plan must be written and then approved by the City Council. And then again, the law, the law allows for the schools to choose whether or not to participate in each of the TAD. And you can see the table of contents, I mean, you probably can't see the table of contents, but not going to run through all 60 pages of the report, but this is the report that is kind of in question tonight and, and that we're being requested to, for you all to participate in this plan. And, and so if you zoom in a little bit, you can see where this TAD, the boundaries of the TAD in right, in red, if you're familiar with Rigdon Park. Rigdon Park has kind of been carved out there on the, again, the southwest corner by the river. So Rigdon Park is not in this TAD plan, but these are six privately held parcels, actually five privately held parcels and, and one parcel that is the, the Riverwalk. And so it's just over 200 acres. Not a lot on a per acre basis right now, there's not a lot going on there. You can see that there's no streets, there's not a lot of infrastructure. But this is Dr. Wright's property as well as Neighbor Works' property, who planned to develop this in a couple of different ways. One is with housing, much-needed affordable housing on this site, as well as an entertainment district potentially, that, that the riverfront area obviously has the ability to attract commercial development, entertainment development, as well as housing development. And so it's, no plans are, have gone through zoning, so it's still a bit up in the air exactly what is going to be built on this property, but at least on the riverfront property. The housing property on the southeast side of the TAD, where you can see Bull Creek coming through the bottom, that, that property has been rezoned for new housing. So you don't have to read all the words on the right, but basically the criteria, what makes this area feasible for a TAD per the state law? And again, all the, all the words on the right are kind of the state law. But basically, the bottom line is the, this piece, these six parcels are eligible to be part of a TAD because they can provide affordable housing and because these are deemed as economic development tracks with inadequate infrastructure. And so that meets sort of the hurdle in order to create a TAD there. And again, just some summaries from, from the TAD plan itself, the main, excuse me, the main one that I really want to point out is in the middle. What the TAD funds would be used for is really, again, you saw sort of the lack of infrastructure just from that map. No, no streets, no, no water sewers, et cetera, to support housing or any other type of development. And so that's really what this TAD would do, is it would, it would attract private sector development to pay additional property taxes, and those property taxes would be plowed back into that red boundary to pay for the infrastructure. So it's, it's a, it's a well-used tool throughout the state to accomplish very similar things. In the plan, you, the law requires that you sort of forecast forward what might be built within the TAD. And again, it's just, it's, the law requires some sort of forecast. So, so we took a look at what might be built. And the bottom line, what I want to get at here is, right now, on those 212 acres, the schools and the county together are collecting $64,000 in taxes. So the school gets a little bit more than half of that generally. And so at the end of the day, at build-out, the idea is that, again, combined, you'll now be collecting over $2 million of property taxes on that site. So again, a lot going on on the left, but just to look at on the right, as new, and again, this is part of the redevelopment plan, the plan has to anticipate how many schoolchildren might be moving into this site. And so we anticipate somewhere around 200 to, 180 to 200 new students that might be created, that might be in the new units that are created here. And we're estimating the cost to educate each of our, that collection of new, new school students on the site to be about $630,000 a year at build-out. And so the idea is, is not only are the property taxes going to increase, and those property taxes are funneled back into the TAD, but here's the kicker. The kicker is, is that personal property taxes and retail taxes, ESPOS collections, are not pledged into the TAD. And so we are forecasting the green and the blue there, excuse me, the, the red, the, the green and the red at the bottom, which is also about 630,000. That, that is a forecast of what the personal property plus the new ESPOS collections that are created in the TAD will, will grow to. So it's about a net even in terms of the new costs and the amount of new personal property and sales taxes that will be collected in the TAD, so kind of a wash. And then when the TAD is over, because TADS don't last forever, TADS have an expiration, and when the TAD is over, you can see in the gray and the blue, that's the, that's the expansion of the property taxes that your digest will grow, basically. This is going to accelerate the digest growth at the end of the TAD. So, so that's really what you're gaining. It's kind of a long, a long play, if you will, in that you're covering your costs, basically, if those 200 new students show up, that you've got uncovered, basically, with the new collections. And then when the TAD is over, you, you increase your property taxes enough that you've really accelerated your digest. And again, the idea with this is that but for the participation of the public sector, the private sector would not be able to do this, right? So that's the bottom line, in that basically the developer would say, "Look, we want to build here, but there's no infrastructure. It's going to cost us too much to put in all this infrastructure, to put in the roads, et cetera, et cetera." So that land is just going to lay fallow, right? It will continue to lay fallow right there on the riverfront, but for the participation of the public sector. And the TAD is a tool for the public sector to come in and get this infrastructure done within that concrete of a TAD. So that's a really quick nutshell of a redevelopment plan and what we're, what we're seeing, again, I don't know if this is the vote is tonight, but we would vote that in the, in the future, not just this future, you might consider participating in this TAD, you had in previous tests.
Oh, previously, $630,000. That's what it's going to cost the school district?
That's on the right. That's our forecast. If we said around 200 new students showed up in the new housing that's being forecasted here, and if we said it costs about 3,500 bucks to, to, in local service costs, to service them, right? And basically, we came up with that number, looked at the, your local cost per child, times 200, well, actually, times 180 in this, in this scenario, that's where.
That's where that number comes from.
Thank you, sir.
Are there any other questions?
Just a couple of questions.
Hit your microphone, Ms. Chambers.
Just a couple of questions. The expiration of the TAD, how many years was the TAD for?
That will be up to the TAD committee and the City Council. The language in the, in the law, actually, let me show you the redevelopment plan. The language is up there in the upper right. It says the redevelopment powers law provides the TAD, and evidence is all redevelopment costs, including debt service, are paid in full. So, so that this redevelopment plan does not have a terminating date on it. It is, there's a reason for that, because if you use the TAD to leverage funds, to borrow against the future increment, you have to make sure that all that gets paid off, right? And so financiers get nervous when they see a specific expiration date, because they want to make sure they got, that when, if, when bonds go out, they want to make sure they get repaid.
Sounds good.
Another question?
Yeah, I have a question for, for David. The schools in that area, do we have any schools that perhaps are not meeting the mark when it comes to funding?
Enrollment?
That these 200 students, if, if we were to increase by 200 students in that area?
Definitely, definitely.
Okay. Perfect. Okay.
And again, that's, that's a forecast. I mean, there's numbers that went in, we didn't plug that number out of the air. There's, in, in the redevelopment plan, it spells out how we came up with that.
And you said you've already gone before council?
Yes, ma'am.
So the next step is the school board, and so you're anticipating us to make this an action item for, in this month, August?
If you, if we were so lucky, that'd be, that would be great.
What's the question? Turn your microphone on, Ms. Chambers.
I was just, I just brought that up.
Are you saying, I'm sorry, say it again.
I, I just brought it up because I was just wondering if we were going to have any discussion time or, I mean, it's not fair, you know, and it's a benefit of us each other. We just got to, Mrs. Chambers just asked about how many students we had and how the benefit our schools can make. So it's a benefit. I was just wondering.
You want to discuss it? So you want to bring it in September?
I think, I, I brought.
It has to stay on the table for 30 days, don't it?
It's not a policy.
Okay.
I just brought it up. I just brought that in. I'm willing to do whatever the board, whatever is the pledge of the board, we can do it, we can do it if we want, but I was just saying we can.
I agree. I, I think it all sounds very good, and I feel like usually with these kind of things, we let them sit. I mean, you know, we're presented in it till later before we vote on it. So I think we should have at least a month to really digest it and get any thoughts on it. It's a, you know, kind of big decision to make in a week.
I would suggest that, I think the report is on your system, and it might, it might move all the members of the board to pull it down and read it, and when you're comfortable voting, after you've gone through the whole six or some pages, it'll be fine.
Great.
We just appreciate the opportunity. And I have to apologize for my proper procedure, but I forgot to call Dr. Lewis back in town. I had to check it with the consultant, I just forgot to, I'm sorry.
No problem. No problem at all.
So if you want to ask some questions, you know, you can, Dr. Lewis.
Any other questions?
Sounds good.
And, and my, my contact information is here, I'm having to.
To contact you directly?
Yeah, you can contact me directly, honestly, follow your rules, but I'm, I'm open, open to answering questions at any time. And again, I appreciate your time and your consideration.
And Ms. Jones, would you email us?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you very much.
Thank you so very much. Next item, presentation is three point zero two, the American Rescue Plan application.
Yes, this is a plan that we've been working on for some, some of this was in, all of this was presented to you all in a generic form back in March, April, which presented to the board. Then Mr. Smith, Dr. Smith, is going to share with you more detail on how we plan to spend this ARD. And keep in mind, this is a long-term project, this is just looking, looking at, we're hoping to spend this over a three-year period, if you know it's going to take longer, that's what we have to spend these dollars. And what we need, as we'll hear, we're going to have a process to review it, and then review it every six months or so. So Dr. Smith, you have two meetings to discuss this, as well. So now we're going to have order here at the final level, our visit, we have it up here, and then this is the plan itself, that Dr. Smith is presenting.
Good evening, board. Dr. Lewis, thank you for this opportunity to talk through our plan. As Dr. Lewis said, this is a plan that has been to the state that we have to review at least semi-permitted over the next three years until the funds are expended. So we have, we have submitted our initial plan or application to the state, and it's been accepted. And so just going forward, we'll revise as we need to. So just to look at the application itself, there's three basic areas. We have assurances, our priorities, and then focus on the funds themselves, which is broken down into three areas, and we'll get to those. Just some quick acronyms, and I can go through all those. But the, the big one is going to be the ESTER, that's Emergency Relief Funds, that the American Rescue Plan funds comes up under, as well as the CARES Act funds that we received initially. There's five assurances in the application that basically by submitting the application to the state, we're saying we'll meet these five assurances. And so I'm not going to read through each of these slides, but basically, we have to make the, the plan publicly available for review and for feedback. And then we have to make sure that we are using the funds for the intended purposes of the, of the source. The second assurance, I apologize, this is funky angle from my vision. So we have to review periodically. We have to do it at a minimum of semi-annually, but we can review more often than that if needed. And then again, seeking ongoing public comments. One of the things we did at our community meetings last week was gave the opportunity to give their contact information if they wanted to be involved in, give the contact information if they wanted to be involved in these discussions going forward. And so we had, I believe it was three names that were interested, so that was helpful. The third assurance, the revised plan, we had to make sure that we revise our plan, that we are meeting the safety recommendations from the CDC, and that's something that we hear a lot. And the fourth one, if we had a plan that was developed prior to these funds, which we did, we had to make, go back and make sure that that plan addressed CDC requirements, the intents of, of the funds, and that is reviewed periodically as well. And then the last assurance is that we had to make sure that the plan was provided in an understandable way, uniform format, that we addressed language needs of the community, and just basically made it accessible to all people. So our overall priorities, we looked at some, the data sources we looked at, because we haven't had standardized testing, we've, we've had to shift to look at, okay, what do we have formatively throughout the year? And our schools this past spring did a comprehensive needs assessment in preparation for the upcoming three years for their school improvement plan. So we pulled information from those needs assessments, and the three overarching priorities when looking at all the schools' needs assessments were these right here. We need to reestablish an in-person climate academically, behaviorally, socially, and emotionally. We need to focus on personalized learning, reaching our kids individually where they are, with the needs that each individually have. And then we need to reestablish and increase family and employee engagement. The three components are around learning opportunity loss, and we have to spend a minimum of twenty percent of the funds on learning opportunity loss. And then there's specific use of funds outlined where we can spend the funds. And then there had to be, we had to address how we plan to prevent and mitigate the spread of COVID. So learned opportunity loss, we, things we're focusing on, we've got high-frequency tutoring. That's through a couple of different avenues. So we have after-school tutoring with our instructional extension program. Those are state funds we've received for as long as I can remember that schools use for after-school. Some schools occasionally use Saturday programs as well. And then for the next three years out of these funds, we are funding intervention teachers, primarily part-time intervention teachers in elementary and middle, and then full-time in high school. Those teachers are focusing on at-risk students through a variety of approaches, whether that's pull out in small groups, whether that's going into classrooms, provide supports. So that is, when we get to the percentages, the percentages are deceiving because those salaries are not really falling up under that, that percentage. Summer programming, which we started this past year and have gotten a lot of positive feedback. We want to continue the same approach and improve on it going forward. So we would keep that out of these funds as well. And that was a large expenditure with that approach of including all students and bringing in things outside of reading and math to engage the students. Visual, our virtual learning, I'm sorry. We'll continue those things that we've been doing there as well. Now, some of these things are not funded through American Rescue Plan, but there are strategies we're going to continue. For instance, Apex, we use Apex for credit recovery, Georgia Virtual, but those are not costs to this pot of funds. And then parent and family engagement, that's always a focus in Title I schools. There's some, there's some desire there to focus on that across the district, at least for the next few years, as we try to reengage and get back to whatever the new normal will be. Summer learning experience, talked about that. Supplemental resources, so that's like Achieve, Lexia, IXL Math. Those are all things that we had been using last two or three years and will continue to use. Those are not funded through these funds. They're funded through Title I and Title IV funds primarily. The instructional extension program mentioned, we are in the state's pilot of multi-tiered systems of supports. So there's some requests for the funds in that area that would align with social, emotional, at-risk students in, or primarily those two areas. And then PBIS or Positive Behavioral Interventions and Supports. Again, these are things that we've already been, been doing. There's some additional requests to enhance these, these efforts, but they're, they're not going away if we don't fund them through these funds, I guess is what I'm trying to say. We have a Gado Dyslexia Pilot that needs some additional resources that we're looking to fund out of ARP. Mentioned intervention teachers, academic coaches are Title I funded, but those are targeted to learning opportunity loss. School-based health centers that we continue to work on expanding, and that would help our at-risk students. And then we have the community and schools and the United Way Partnership, which is a focus on increasing family engagement. The community and schools is funded through Title I and School Improvement Grant Funds, so that would not come from this. Here are the percentages that right now, these are, you know, basically rough draft, the first draft. These will change over time as we revise the plan. And I do want to just, just mention, there is overlap here. So we had to kind of pinpoint a category for the percentage purposes.
So I just want to, I want to ask a question specific to this concerning, you know, what, what apparently some people perceive from this presentation. This is not, so this is not the, all that we're going to expend on mental health at-risk populations is nine percent. This is in addition to a very large percentage that we're already spending because we have a robust system that addresses and has addressed mental health at-risk populations, family engagement, not necessarily PPE, but that I've always been very proud of. So I just want to make sure that, that it's understood that this is in addition to an already very robust budget towards that population. Thank you.
So these are, the next few slides are, are areas that we can target the funds. So we have the at-risk student populations, and these are the subgroups that state identified for that, for that purpose.
You said the state identified the groups?
Within application, yes. These are the five identified in application. And then, I'm sorry.
Do we have a plan being for how we're going to address the population too?
So, good question. So everything in the application does not have to be targeted. It's going to depend on the needs of each district and how they, how they pursue allocating those funds. There is things that will impact. For instance, the summer learning is going to touch on all, all five of those groups. There's, there's going to be overlap across that. But as far as a specific plan, specifically to each of those, that is not in the application. It's just, the state is saying that these are allowable groups to spend money on.
Does that mean we're going to give the schools the flexibility to develop the plan for their population? Is that what you're saying?
So Dr. Lewis has, is adamant about wanting to provide mini-grants to schools. And so those details will be fleshed out and provided to the schools, where the schools will have some flexibility to do some things around their specific needs that is just hard to do at a district level.
Correct.
So is it fair to say this is the high level?
Right.
Sort of thirty thousand foot level?
Well, maybe fifteen.
And they'll be, they'll be drilling down further at a school level? Okay.
Yeah, because, for example, we have, under Dr. Smith's leadership, we've started a newcomers class that has been very successful, and there, there may be need to supplement those additional teachers because we are seeing additional students coming into those programs or greater needs. So those are some of the examples of how we can incorporate some of these funds to, again, to your point, to supplement, not supplant, to supplement what we're already doing.
And is it fair to say that if any single population grows because of some of the difficulties that we are dealing with, that the budget will grow accordingly to accommodate those needs?
And again, that's the, I think that's the idea. Well, I know it's the idea behind the review every six months to see how are you utilizing the money? Is it effective? And then is there a need to adjust accordingly?
Thank you.
All right, so another area is CTIE that we can focus on, and we all know the success of that program. And then institutes have benefited from, from things that we can do through these funds there. Continuity of store, core staff and services. So a large chunk is going here between employee stipends, supporting just deficits in employee salaries, offsetting the need for furloughs, those types of things.
So let me be clear, there is no discussion of furloughs. This is just to offset that need to ensure that we don't have to do that. So I want to be really clear about that. Last year, we reused some of these funds last spring to offset what was a furlough at that point in time. So there are no considerations about furloughs and like that. We're just having, we have to be clear and explicit in how we're utilizing these funds to do that going retroactively back to last spring.
Transportation operations is an example. And a couple of requests we received there is around the videos on the bus. The videos are stored, cloud, it's a cloud-based storage, and there's just upgrades needed there. Things like, you need to upgrade the wash rack for buses. Never really dawned on me, and I know we, we wash buses, but never really think about washing the buses. But you don't see dirty school buses either, so there's a need. Other operational costs, e-books, R and P equipment. So we know with the Chromebooks and one-to-one, and now with all pre-K, if you second having new Chromebooks this year, we need more ebook access.
You said pre-K?
It was pre-K. And then we mentioned, talk about mini-grants. Distance and remote learning, so the hotspots that we have used last year, this may or may not come out of these funds. There may be another source for that, but we're, if we have to, we could take it out of here. We are looking for, the hotspots would be a two-year agreement because it's cheaper for the district that way. So that is all set up and, and ready to go for kids. Actually, the, the hotspots have stayed with the schools so that they can be deployed right away this year. We're looking at possible teacher devices through these funds. Some hardware things like flat panels in a classroom, monitors for teachers in a classroom. There's some requests for assistive and technology adaptive equipment through, for our special needs students. And then some just online learning platforms as well. So some of those are for special needs, and some of those are just in general. We will continue to look at sanitization, disinfection needs, equipment and supplies as far as PPE, and we'll continue to supply those mass cleaning supplies.
Can I ask a question? On this sanitation, disinfecting of buildings and buses, I don't, I think that's the only place I saw in here, the physical buses. Are we, are we going to be able to successfully dis, socially distance our students on the buses with the shortage that we have of drivers?
No, and that's why we're, of course, that's one of the reasons why the federal mandate is in place for masking on all transportation to include school buses.
So how, if you don't mind me asking, and maybe you want to address this later, how are we going to be able to enforce the masking on buses? That's been a concern. I mean, is the driver going to be the one?
We have, we have.
They're sort of tasked with being in charge of that?
They have masks on each bus that are provided for them to give. If a student has one that breaks or they get on the bus and forgot there's a problem, or they get on in the afternoon and didn't, left it in the classroom, whatever, they, they will be provided another mask, yes.
Thank you.
Yes.
Things as far as mental and physical health. We've got counseling, school nursing, therapeutic services. These are all allowable things, and we have multiple requests for the funds in this area. Professional development, that's an ongoing thing in a lot of different areas. So there's multiple requests there as well. And then school meals, now that the kids are back, we need sanitization stations, touch shields, things like that to protect employees and students.
Are they back to the lunchroom? Are they eaten in the classrooms? Or is it sort of a both of them? Both of them? Is this just elementary tier, or is this all the way through senior high?
Primarily elementary.
Yes, sir. Thank you, sir.
And middle school.
And middle school, okay. Do they choose, or who chooses the difference of the two? The building and straight principal? Thank you. Dr. Lewis, the young lady had a question, want to go. If there's, if a student does not have a mask, do we have masks for the students who don't have a mask?
Yes, we've given, on the buses and our schools, they were all hand-delivered last week. They all have boxes of masks available to them for the use of students. Again, if they forget one, if they, if there's breaks, if it, for whatever reason, they have a mask that they can be provided.
Thank you, sir.
All right, we talked through a lot of these. I'm going to go back through these. Basically, anything supporting something on the learnings is allowable cost. And then the last part of the plans are around prevention and mitigation strategies, how do we engage the community? And so we have on there, there's the monthly meetings with the medical care. Sometimes it's more frequent, even once a month. Monthly department meetings with Department of Public Health. Weekly meetings with school-based COVID liaisons. Tracy Fassner, those people. Every week to update them, have discussions around these, those types of things. Community connect and chat meetings, town hall meetings, and then community agency partnerships. And then strategies to reduce transmission. We're all aware of the mask, physical distancing as much as possible, and washing. Maintaining healthy clean facilities with any contact tracing necessary. So that was what we submitted to the state. And we have to, we have to revisit that at a minimum twice a year. We have to get community feedback through that process. And we had to have an approved initial application before we could submit an initial budget to the state for approval.
Question, and I guess suggestion for the credit recovery to include the overage, undercredit students as well as we did during the summer learning? To continue to capture and bring those students?
Absolutely.
That would be, that would be a part of the summer learning experience as we would go ongoing. But if specifically mentioning that, we can do that.
It's said through the year as well, the presentation.
During the regular school year as well.
This is kind of off top of this, but we've, we've had in the past, where we kind of use Title I funds to support Marshall Success Center. And we've been working with the state to find a solution to that. And we found, we have found a solution for that. So that they'll be getting some additional resources, and Marshall does support those students as well.
What's that solution? Is that coming from this budget right here?
No. Basically, what they told us in the past is because Marshall doesn't have a school, that doesn't have a school code, that they cannot get a Title I allocation, but they're still considered Title I students, depending on which school they came from. So what we were able to do is we can use, basically, the allocation went to, let's say, let's say it's a student from Carver. If Carver got four hundred dollars a student, we can direct that four hundred dollars to Marshall.
Okay, what are the particular students that are being educated at the Marshall Success Center? Can I let that make sense? I have a couple of questions. Explain this to me. I understand the application and the presentation, but some of the things in the presentation you already have in the Title I budget or the general budget. The application, or this is the application for a particular pot of money? A particular budget? If so, how much? And then do we actually have a budget that specifically just talks about how we use the American Rescue Plan full months? That doesn't sort of intertwine some of this stuff that we're already paying out of a different budget?
So if you ask, there will be budgeting for it. We just couldn't submit one to the state prior to this point. So now that we have an application, then we can submit a budget to the state. So we'll start hitting that final list. We're looking at a three-year window. So the American Rescue Plan is spent through September 2024. So with that, the initial budget, we're going for the full amount, but I would anticipate there's going to be a lot of revisions to the budget over that three years just because needs are going to shift. And we have to put in the amount upfront, but some of that's going to be more projection because we don't want to spend it all in one year. So to the amount, we had roughly ninety-five million allocated to the district, but then they came back and they broke it into two different pots. And the first pot was roughly two-thirds, and the last pot was about a third. So the first two-thirds is currently in the state pool, ready for us to put a budget in. The state has submitted an application to USAID for the last third because that was a requirement USAID had put in for all states was that they release the first two-thirds, and then they're going to come back with a plan of how do you get to spend the last third before they would release that to the states. So they've got that plan approved, and part of that plan was this application process for the, for the districts. So I don't know at what point we're going to see the other third in the state pool, but that will be coming, and then we'll be putting a budget for that, of course.
Okay, can you walk me through, I'm just trying to wrap my head around it. Can you walk me through the logistics? So if the district has the ninety-one million dollars to track up all of these schools, the principal is going to submit a budget to the district? How do they spend the funds? How do they allocate it?
So the district will, like for instance, the type of media, of course, staff and services, those things that are needed for salaries, for stipends, for employees, those things are coming off the top. Those, so we're looking at all those things. Kind of like we do with the Title I budgets, the Title I set aside, and this is the Title I school allocation. So they'll be broken up those two different ways. I don't know, as far as this point, I don't know how much we're allocating to the schools for them to request. But that will be. But that would be, there would be a delineation between the two and then once that's set out, set out, then the school report with us on how they want to spend those funds. And then we're going to have to come back at that point with, with a budget revision, once we know how they really want to spend the money.
And the way I envision that is once our, our plan, our application is approved, we will come back then and then schools can apply for their mini-grants and submit. I want them to think outside the box, whatever they have to do is innovative and creative as they can to develop a plan to work with their specific student population because every school has its own unique DNA and they have to have the ability to have some flexibility and innovation. So they'll resubmit that plan to us and as long as it's an approved expenditure, then it makes sense and we will approve that and based on the funds they're requesting.
So the money gets coming off the top, where is that list coming from?
The district. So when you approved the stipends last spring and again for this coming year, that comes off the top based on who's qualified for each of those stipends.
Based on his determination, based on the, what's coming off the top, that's something I think is coming off the top, but it's based on how the administration determines the basic needs, the top one. Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, Miss Green. It's based on how the administration determine what's needed first and that comes off the top like everything else that's budgeted in the plan of the district.
And then the additional intervention teachers, same thing, that you all approved for us to move forward with is allowing the intervention teachers for schools, whether it be some schools elected to hire forty-nine percent part-time teachers, some have had paras, again, it's all based on what their respective needs are and who they can hire and who's available to them.
So you and the cabinet have come up with the things that, I guess that's what I'm trying to get you.
We have with, with also, not just us, but also talking with our directors like Dr. Smith, like Susan Jones, others, we've talked with them to base on the individual needs of the schools. And looking at data, it's all been data-driven. If, if, to Mr. Broadwater's point, if we have a student, if a certain school has a larger student population, that risk, whether it's ESO students, whether it's students with disabilities, whatever it might be, they will have some autonomy to make some decisions based on the, the needs of their school.
Okay, so you're going to get this from principals and things of that nature as well?
Yes.
It's open. Actually, my time, my question that I was going to ask, it should have come immediately before, I'm still going to ask it, but it was, it's not necessarily related to this plan. I was going to ask Keith when he was, when he was responding to the summer learning program. And I wanted to ask a question about the effectiveness of the summer learning program in regard to, as, as, as a measure of determining success. And that measure being if most of the students, what percentage do you think or do you know of students who were failing at the end of summer? At the end of the summer learning program, what was the passage of that, the passage rate? I mean, it doesn't have to be like.
Yeah, yes, we don't have that data, but. Right, those, those are things that are going to be collected along with the survey information and will be presented to the board next month.
Okay. How does it look though, you know, in a game of, because I know generally as in terms of passage, I ask just for one, one measure. And that one measure was failed and passage. Because I know that at the beginning of every summer, at the end of every year, all principals know how many students are failing at their school. As a matter of fact, they know all during the year because there's a problem with teachers say that making sure that, well, not too much time, but in order to fail a student nowadays, teachers have to document everything. So failures are being tracked all through and during the year. So at the end, everybody knows how many students failure a principal because they track them, teachers have to turn in at the end of the night weeks. So why do you student failing, council will send them a note about this student, this student's failing class. So my point is, we know how, at the end of the summer, at the beginning of the summer learning program, we know how many students are failing at each school. So I was thinking that, that information, just failed and passage, as, as that, that measure can easily be done. So I was wondering, have you done even that yet? Because that's easy.
Turn your mics off so Mr. Cypher can turn his mic on, please.
Yes, the, I know you requested some information, we're collecting that, that information and then we're going to submit that. I'm, I'm getting that information from the schools.
Mine was just five or six, but I'm thinking like.
Yeah.
For all, for all.
Yeah, they've, they've, they've collected that information or they're collecting that information, they have it. So we, we would collect it and be able to present that in, in September.
Dr. Smith, you mentioned that you, I guess when you all had the public meeting, you collected some names and contact information for people in the public who wanted to participate. Are you going to have additional meetings and contact those people? And if so, can you also let the board know when those meetings are going to take place so we also can participate? And also hear from the public on, on what they're interested in? So can you, can you get us that information?
Yes, any future meetings we have with, with the community will let you know. There may be, as far as the community involvement, there could be where they're involved in a meeting or it could be before we make a revision where we contact them and go through, you know, have those discussion in a smaller group setting with them, but that can all be communicated.
And I'd like to thank y'all because you generally take them by people I've gone to, just about all the meetings that y'all have had with the public and, and I've, you've invited the board and I've gone to all of those meetings, so I appreciate y'all actually inviting us to them.
And, and you will continue to do that to, to the request, but I think it's important to make sure that, that we stay focused that those, the ARP funding use, best use will be addressed by the administrators who are working directly with, with our students, with our boys and girls to make that determine, we will use the public form to inform the public of what the professionals, the folk in the trenches deem to be necessary and appropriate to address learning loss, closing achievement gaps, and accelerating our, our boys and girls. And so we want to make sure that we make all those efforts to inform the public on the use of the form.
Also collecting data too, like, we are also, thank you, collecting data too from the public. Because we want everybody's input, we want input of parents or community input, we want everybody's input before we formally.
And that's a good requirement.
I just wanted to say thank you because, because sometimes public engagement takes on different looks. You know, and sometimes it's information, getting the information to the public is engaging the public. I hope everybody realizes this has been a monumental feat done in a fairly short period of time with the interests of our most vulnerable at heart, not only our special needs, but those who have just slipped behind because we don't need them to become something that they, they weren't destined to be before. We've all been through a very difficult sixteen months and I am not going to pretend that we don't have a very difficult road ahead of us. But I appreciate this report and the work that has gone in to trying to get our, our kids back in their seats, learning again, thank you.
One request I have, and that might be more for Dr. Lewis, I do think when we, you know, it doesn't have to stay up there all the time, but I do think putting on our website, kind of the tracking of these additional funds we're getting would help with the public transparency.
Absolutely, one of the things I just want to point out, again, everything, I want to reiterate the fact that we're taking data, we're looking at our data to make some of these decisions. It's not just what we think, feel, or believe, it's about what we see in the data that's going to be driving these decisions. To that same point, when we give these mini-grants, we're going to ask them for specific metrics they're going to be looking at to see, is it working? Because if it's working there, it might be something we want to replicate someplace else. So that's going to be critically important to go forward for them to be able to report back to us every six months, what are you seeing? What data, you know, is, is providing us with information about what is replicable, what's effective? Or, as another one was saying, you know what, we thought would work, it didn't work for whatever reason and we're going to retool and readapt, so.
We get a very close to the topic already, and we're far working on this. Dr. Lewis, I appreciate the fact that you're going to give administrators or teachers an opportunity to apply and be outside the box because of all the learning loss we've had in the last sixteen months, it comes to be, be outside the box, doing something innovative, doing some testing or stuff. So I definitely love your idea and I appreciate you being able to agree with us.
Absolutely. And I want to also remind everybody, it's not just learning loss, there was incomplete learning. When this all happened in March of twenty twenty, we were still two and a half months from the end of the school. So it's not just about learning loss, it's also about incomplete learning we have to make up. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Smith, and we appreciate the report as everyone has reiterated. And I think it probably, one of our speakers, Mr. Broadwater, is still here, addressed a lot of what you were thinking, like many other people in the community are also thinking the same thing and that the team was hard at work making preparations to address those very same issues that are critical.
And I do want to point out, if I may, yes, Mr. Broadwater, you talked about two thousand dollars. I'll just point out that we did pay two, a thousand dollars last spring and another thousand dollars this year. So that does, even my math, that comes to two thousand dollars, okay?
All right, we will move into our committee reports, education.
This is Green, we have two items for discussion. And the first one is the, well, it's the club view, you know, if you're about to find it, it's the club view, after-school program. Yes, club view, after-school program, and do we have anybody who's going to, is Hillary at the, what's her?
We have Principal Teresa Lawson here to talk about her program.
It's all perfect. So Club U is looking to add an after-school program that is hosted by the school employees instead of an outside agency. But we also realize that we pour our heart into what we do all day and it will benefit greatly, as did the summer learning experience, from bringing in community partners, just like they did this summer. So there's been a lot of planning and meetings that have gone in that and some budget work to try to, you know, get all this done. I have a number of partners on board, we'll be able to, with your approval, we'll be able to start our program and fund programming. And it's detailed in the packet that was included to offer to the parents really and the students so that even though they may have to be there all the way to their parent's off of work, it's not just being stuck at school for that anymore hours. I can remember as a teacher and actually, and there were some babies and I didn't have children at that time and they had to be there, you know, teachers really get there at six in the morning, leave at six at night. And I used to think, oh, please, I don't want to have to do that to my kids too, make them just be at school all the time, all the time. But this will bring some exciting programming into us to do that. So Oxba Meadows is on board, Fab Arts is on board, Columbus Public Library, thank you, Mr. Hartley's back there is on board. And they're made in your packet, there are two more, drama kids, and they slipped in because she came to see me about something else and she said, I won't, this is a downgrade. And we're not, it's not going to be a duplicate of the programming that you can sign up for as a parent. So drama kids, for instance, it's not the same that you would participate in that and then have some big show at the end. But more, we have a focus at Club U where we really have been working with the kids and the adults on mindfulness and, you know, staying grounded during your situations and working your way through. We realized that even over the last sixteen months, y'all referred to, a lot of people were carrying a lot of weight things on them and those kind of things to help. So another is just Brady, is yoga and mindfulness. And she has worked with us on a number of things that are written in our school improvement plan and we did implement things throughout that. So these things have been an extension, but still be lively and not, not put all the weight on the classroom teachers who will be staying with the kids afterwards to come up with that extra three hours of programming. So do you have questions about the plan?
I did have one question. The minimum students to keep your plan, your program in operation is thirty and the maximum is thirty-six. What's the significance of those six students that would shut your program down? Were you considered closing your program at sixteen?
So I'm going to throw Matt under the bus just a little bit and I love him and I, you know, he's my boss, he tells me things to do sometimes. But it's, it's really about budgeting. So my initial plan, it goes to him first for him to put out to you guys. And my budget, working it out, is a hundred dollars a kid is what I need. Now, Mr. Knight, he, you know, his wheels are turning, I met with each person individually, so the wheels are turning. How can we help fund this and not keep that cost going on? So it's not necessarily the magic of six, it's that I know what my hourly cost is for my people that will work. I know that I have to stay at a one to eighteen ratio, so, you know, I'm, I'm, eighteen, I haven't seen a person there, and thirty-six, I can pay two people. But I've got to, you know, pay attention to my budget. My costs of my partners coming in, the ones who charge are, is a flat rate. So we're doing it as that and not a per kid rate. What I don't want to do is say, oh, your kid can come and hang out with us for forty-five dollars a day. But in order to participate, you got to do this, 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 I want to all include it. So it was really just playing with the numbers, when I, also when I were sending it in, I wanted to start with fewer and work my way up as we got comfort, as more people were comfortable with working until six o'clock to run the program. And, you know, and then the budget, I've had one parapro, a lot of the schools use cafeteria workers, parapros, hourly employees who are hourly all the time, not salaried. But I have one hourly employee who is interested in working and everyone else is a salaried employee. Before this year, I was under the impression you couldn't use salary employee at all. And then, you know, then this year, yes, you can, the other schools just choose not to because they cost more, you know? And the schools typically, they're doing this and making a profit to turn around and spend on kids. So I'm not looking so much to make a profit, but I've got to know that I'm not paying for it out of other funds for what you have.
So did you?
So that thirty, thirty-six, that thirty will probably break even and that six is my main sum extra. But if I have thirty-eight, I need a third person and I'm going to assess a budget.
So how did your, did you have some kind of, what were the results from your parents? Because it sounds like it's built around community partners versus built around what parents and students may have requested. I think it's great that we got after-school program and I, I'm glad that you all are taking this step. But I always try to be focused on meeting the needs of, of parents and students with after-school programs. So because if you drop down to thirty and parents who can A afford, you know, to do this, but actually need it because they're working and then it goes away, then it was just about this fantastic program and to have all these different partners, which is, which is, I think is great.
Well, I will say as a, if I may, I will say as a school, we have not advertised at all. Because we know that we have to, you know, had to do that research and get. Because we know that we have to, you know, had to do that research and get it in place, and, you know, do those pieces.
But did the research include the parent input is what I'm trying to ask you?
Right, I understand. So where we were before, Parks and Rec hosted, on our site, we hosted Parks and Rec to run our after-school program.
And how many, how many did you, how many participates in the program now with the other agency?
We came in today, I got the email today, and, you know, it's Parks and Rec, so we didn't, we didn't have those numbers. I know initially, five years ago, that's mine initially for Club View, that they were probably serving about a hundred kids. And over the year, that, you know, over the timeframe of those five, that dropped. By the last year that they hosted on-site, they had about sixty.
About sixty, and your maximum is thirty-six?
Yes, ma'am. Well, last year I had zero.
Hit your head.
Well, but we had zero, and we had zero buses. So all of my kids were either picked up, walked home, or they rode one of the ten daycare vans. So, and we still, like, we solicited, you know, people and got them to do. So, parents have still been provided that information. We don't have any kids that are getting, you know, no one's left behind right now, no one's whatever. There may be some out there who are making some adjustment, but we haven't advertised, hey, this is coming, because we know we need to go through these steps to get it done.
Do you, do you know how many students need, how many parents need after-school program?
I do not. Because the inquiries I've received and been able to say, the ones who, you know, say they take a call in the office, the call comes, hey, do you want after-school on-site? We don't, but we, we do have a list of all the people who picked up from us last year. Can we share that with you, and will that help? Absolutely. They, you know, we emailed in that list, and we don't hear from them yet, they're fine.
Let me ask you, so in 2019, your school was being serviced by Parks and Rec? Before, pre-pandemic?
Yes, ma'am, yes, ma'am.
Okay, how many kids were, did I hear you say that there were sixty?
About sixty by then.
About sixty being served?
Correct.
Okay, so what I'm wondering now, you know, everybody has to work, parents have to work.
Sure.
And I noticed that Ms. McGreen asked a question about, did you have any parental input in terms of what, how your program will be serviced? So, I'm thinking is, if you do thirty-six tops, what's that, twenty-four? Would have the rest of the parents, you know, I'm just saying. Were, you devise a very, very good program, it sounds, it sounds, it sounds a lot like a summer learning program. But what I'm wondering now, is it, is it going to service the, your community, your school? You know, is it enough, is it big enough? I know what you've done, I know why it's going to drop down, because you're paying teacher salaries, real salaries for your employees, that sounds good. They're, they're making real salaries as opposed to these hourly salaries that probably the other schools are paying hourly salaries, so they can accommodate more kids. But what I'm wondering is, in terms of the population that you serve, you know, and of course, in your, in your community, it's not like it's a low, low-income community. However, it's probably a community of working parents. And if people work, they, you know, they probably want their kid serviced in a place like in their neighborhood school first than somewhere else. And so I was just thinking about whether, you know, the consideration of that, I see, I see you didn't consider that, so.
So, I, so I guess I'm going to come along the same lines. First of all, do you know what Parks and Rec was charging?
I do not know their rates. I had, is that, some of what can you give Mr. Red?
Most families were paying sixty-two a week.
So fairly comparable after a year and a half. But I am concerned that if thirty-six is your maximum, and in the last service period that we had comparable, there was a hundred, there's going to be kids left out, even, even those kids who could afford the increase in costs. And I'm concerned about those children. Will, will this replace Parks and Rec?
Parks and Rec is no longer on the side. Correct.
Period.
Correct.
Regardless of what you were to do, Parks and Rec is not doing this any longer.
Not as likely.
They want to, they want to have their own, like as we've done this.
Let me ask it a different way. If you were not willing to do it your own, would Parks and Rec have the opportunity to come in and do it like they did for pre-COVID?
I would prefer a different provider.
Okay, but this, okay, so I'm concerned that, and I do like program, and I love your, your community partners, I think that's, that's a real bonus. But I'm concerned that it's going to serve a very small constituency within your community at the expense of a larger need, which is clearly, was clearly indicated in the last period that there was, you know, service. So, I mean, how would we, how would we address that?
Let me ask this question, so would there be the possibility, if the need was for you to have a teacher, would there be the need, the opportunity, if you only have one or two people from your staff, would there be the opportunity for someone from another school, say, Ann at Johnson or whatever, to come over and serve in that capacity, so you could increase the number, as long as you cover the cost?
And I have my, you know, the initial, all this came from an inquiry anyway, that, you know, it's a parent inquiry, went to a board member, board member passed it on and said, no, hey, let's look at this, you know, all for something on-site. So, as we started looking at that, I still don't want to buy off more than I can chew to begin. And so, to me, and maybe it's not understandable, you know, in the, or clear that it's written that we will continually assess that and do. And it may be that once it's time, and I say, okay, here's this open window, get all your applications in and let me look at it, you know, I get the hundred, then what can I do? What can I afford? And I have all my workers who all want to work one day or this day, but nobody want to work on Friday, things like that. Then I'll work that out.
But it's also, it's confusing when you say, what can I afford? Because your cost, the fee should include, it should be budgeted for the cost of personnel.
Yes, it does. That's why it's rated this, and that's why the numbers fall. But I know that, you know, where I'm looking now, I'm looking at twelve hundred dollars in, and that's before some of the extra fee stuff that goes when you pay salary to someone a week for the salary. So, it's, it's a lot, it's a lot different than having the ten-dollar-an-hour employee who's making time and a half at fifteen dollars an hour than it is having a fifty-five-dollar-an-hour paid teacher.
But what's the most, because you're, this is an after-school program, this isn't a classroom. So isn't it, I've got a couple of questions. Isn't it more important to see if we can accommodate more hourly employees to be able to, you know, bring in more kids with more hourly? And then my next question is, who decides which thirty-six kids get in? And what is your criteria for acceptance into this, what is sounding a little bit like an elite program?
So, there's not a criteria to get in? I mean, you know, it would truly be a...
First come, first served?
Uh...
Because you said getting all your applications and I'll look at all.
Correct. So the goal is starting at thirty-six, because it may be, you know, if I get that number, and I look at that and know, okay, there's enough to fund, like, my extra four, if I go to forty, you know, I get forty apps, somebody's got to cut. Because the extra four means I need three people, and then I'm going in the hole every month, every week.
So I have a question for Dr. Lewis. And first of all, let me say this about the program. I love the idea of the innovativeness and the different types of activities that the kids will be able to experience. That is totally different than a Parks and Rec program, where they're not getting this extra learning and interactive, and it's totally different. And my personal opinion is, you can do a better quality program with a smaller amount of kids in this environment. My second, my question for Dr. Lewis is, and to me, it's more important, quality is more important than quantity. Because if I'm just putting sixty kids in the lunchroom and letting them go play outside, it's a little different than what this program is providing. My question for you, Dr. Lewis, is, this, this is already at, like, Allen, Britt David, Forest Row, Hannan Key, North Columbus, Reese Row, and Linton Academy. What are the, what are those numbers like? Are they all like a hundred kids for the after-school program, or are they different?
Mr. Smith, we would have to pull those numbers and see what the applications are, and we can certainly do that. We just communicate with the principals and see what the initial numbers are.
Okay.
I use, Ms. Whitaker's one of my resources, she was Hannan.
Okay.
And from her very first year, I mean, she was an advocate for everybody. She's like, hey, guys, y'all got to get on board with this, this helps, and it makes money for your school, and, you know, this is the way to go. And she's made a transition at this point. She has Parks and Rec at Johnson, and they serve three kids. So, you know, then she was looking at, can I start my own? But if it's such a small number, then she's like, oh, I know that I want to do that. Let's see, you know, how really it's going to work out, you know, what would that be?
But that's my point, if you would survey your parents, then you could build your program around the need of your parents. Your parents at your school, who have to go to work, versus some random number of thirty-six. And to Ms. Williams' point, who are the thirty-six, because it becomes elitish, and this is public school.
I've been waiting to say the same, I've been actually waiting to say the same thing that Ms. Green just said. In, in education, in your principal, and your teachers. When we have goals, and when we set things up, first thing we do is determine a need. When we decide to write our goals for anything, we do the work, we do the surveys, we do the research, and then we determine a need. In my opinion, what you have not done is determine a need for your school. You went from, you developed the program, and then from the program that you like, you determine a number of students. As she said, in public school, we access needs, what do we need? What do we need at this school? Your school was serving a larger number, double than what a number that you determined. And, and I think, your, you need to, your, your parents at your school need to be surveyed to see how many working parents that you have at your school that will need this service. You need to know the need of the school, start there, and then determine the number, as opposed to the program and then determine the number.
Yes, ma'am.
As I said, the main problem is that the salary versus salary employee, teachers versus hourly employees, which is probably about fifteen, you know, which is a lower amount of money. I don't know how that has to be worked out, but, but that, that's just my opinion.
I want to say thirty-six was a starting point. What were you going to give?
That was our, our starting point. And we, well, we hoped to grow the program, and we really haven't had time to advertise for classified workers, other teachers from other schools. We wanted to get approval first, but thirty-six is a starting point.
But you made a plan with a budget, is what I'm just saying. That was, and you started, the way you started, like I said, was a program and then a number. That's how you made the plan, and you actually have a budget. And the way this is set up with how the teachers, your plan, it, it can grow, it can't grow that much unless you have...
Yes, ma'am.
It seems like you're going to tweak some, you have a budget, so you're kind of locked in, you know, it's when you say...
And we're locked in with that number based on the staff that is committed to this program. And at this point, that is only two people.
What, what happened to the Parks and Recreation, why did they, did they pull out, or did you just decide to change?
We worked, sorry, we worked side by side for a number of years to address issues, to address staff not showing up, and all of a sudden, we had sixty kids that we didn't even know who was supposed to be there. They, they felt like it was a discipline problem, they brought that to us to handle instead of, it was part of their system. I worked with them, they had different leaders that they put in there in different gears, you know, trying to do. And, the, you know, one year, we were, they were going to be finished, and they got a new director, with, you know, a lot of places get new turnover, the new director came, and then came, you know, in the summer, and met with me and said, look, I'm, I hear you. I, I saw it, I came and visited, I want to fix this, give me another chance, you know, that kind of thing. And it, it never was the standard that it needed to be, to be there. There are things that I couldn't continue with comfortably. So if I have to serve kids for three extra hours after the school day, I want another vendor, or we would do ourselves.
We, you know, after, there's no doubt in my own personal mind that you would do a much better job. No doubt how you serve, whether you serve with, with the teachers making their, their same salary work, with teachers making an hourly. So there's no doubt in, I'm sure, any board members that you would do a better job. And I want you to get the impression that I or any board member discount picking on you a lot, because we commend you for recognizing that you need to do better. You need, you saw what was going on at your school. You decided that this can't continue to go on because it's not working. So I want something better for my school. We all, I know, you know, I know what you did, we know what you did. You said, this can't go on, these people not showing up. We still got to do the work, even though they have been paid to do this work. So I'm going to figure something out for my school, to make my, and figure out something that, where my kids could be successful, a much better program. I want to make it fun, I want to make it engaging for students. So, I want to make sure you know that I understand what you did, that all of us, we understand what you did, commend you for those efforts. The only thing that, that I was asking about is that the, the amount of students that are being served. That's the only thing that...
And I think the most important thing...
And if we're all comfortable with approval, and I know you don't really decide that till later, but if y'all are comfortable with that, I'll put those feelers out there and do, you know, say, this is, this is what we're looking at.
I think the most important thing I heard was that thirty-six is a starting point. And that this is based on thirty-six, but that is not putting a frame around thirty-six. So, if this is approved, and you put his parents, or whatever, out there, or feelers, or however you want to gauge the need, and it comes back and there's eighty, you're going to sit down with Mr. Bell, and you're going to say, okay, now how do we figure out how to serve this population, rather than saying, well, we can't serve eighty, we can only pick from their thirty-six kids?
Also, also, the language is going to have to be changed with this maximum thirty-six. After, you know, we, we want to hear what the needs are from the parents at that, at their child's school. Those parents who need after-school care.
So to be clear, and that would be part of my point, who need it, not just who can do it at eighty-five dollars. Because, you know, I think Linton charges forty-five dollars a week. And I do think eighty-five is a significant increase. And I guess that was one of my questions when we talk about budget. Are we using outside partners to have the right ratio of adult per kid, or the, we, so, so really, that's just to enhance what they're doing? The additional cost.
Well, some of them, some of them are being paid, so it's enhancing. Some, as I understand this, when the quote, some of the outside providers are being paid for that service.
Right, my question was, I know they're being paid. My question is, are they being paid, because we need to have a certain number of adults in the building, are they being paid to do the extras, so it's to enhance?
Yes, ma'am. I understand that now. No, the programming adults, the ones who come to give us their services and teach the kids these things that I can imagine doing, they are not responsible for the supervision of the kids. We are responsible for that. We are responsible for signing them out to their parent and know who their parent is. Not that, they're just there to make it fun.
Right. And to my point, which is good, that is part of what's driving the eighty-five dollars. And that's, you know, my biggest concern is that we're not, and I, I haven't had children in daycare in a long time. My youngest is thirteen. But from the other programs that have been presented to us, eighty-five is a good higher than what they're paying at other schools. And I do think that, plug you, I went through that one, but it has about a third of our on free and reduced lunches. So I mean, I do think, you know, there's a need there to make sure that they can, that people are not, not doing this program because they can't afford it.
And if it, I mean, and I know it's still the working parent piece, but you know, if it helps with that transition charter to magnet, the district added buses and Mr. Hill, you know, went in and designated, even in our attendant zone, he went and drove that and came back and said, wait a minute, some of your, you have no buses, but you don't have sidewalks and streetlights. So he was able to designate a large portion of our attendant zone also qualifies for buses. So um, you know, and I know that potentially that means there's some latchkey kids or, you know, whatever, but it still gave that solution of, you know, what the parents have chosen.
And then just curiosity, what are they doing this week as the school started? Or is there any kind of program right now?
No, no, no. No.
And so, at what point do the people that may be used in the past know we weren't gonna be there? I mean, I do think we probably have lower numbers now because people are, something else.
Right. Yeah. From the beginning, when they asked, like I said, my, um, Ms. Buckner was speaking about identify your need, who needs this, who needs this? My need was identify a formality. I was told host something onsite, a vendor, you, something, host something. Cause we were doing nothing onsite. We were giving you all the, you know, the, you know, we've got churches come, daycares come, you know, we've got our long list and we fill them up and they go and they, you know, and we reached, because we serve kids from all over the district, some of them are more spread out and a lot of them are right there on university.
But once you do your, once you do your parent survey, even if they have chosen a different provider now, they may change because it's more convenient or they want them at their school.
So may I ask a question? I wanna make sure I'm hearing this correctly. So in order for her to be able to advertise, I wanna advertise something that's not approved. So uh, in the concept, with the idea that thirty-six is a starting point, if the, if she brings it back with the change of the wording about the, the maximum. If she can, cause the one thing I don't wanna do is go out and ask parents if you're interested in this program and here's what it's gonna entail and all that and get people and then we don't do it. So are, are you okay to prove it in concept pending uh her being able to advertise it and get the number she needs from whoever is interested?
I, I don't, I, I, you know, you said advertise. What, what happened with doing a survey to find out?
Well, it's the same thing. It's the same thing.
To find out if we offered this, would you be interested instead of going ahead, signing up parents and?
No, no, I, I'm saying survey, but the point is, I don't wanna ser, I don't even survey, offer something if there's not a chance of, if, if not gonna be a.
I, I think, I think, I think, I can imagine. We've always approved that, but no one has come before us and had not asked their parents before. That's why we're having this dialogue back and forth. We want, the board is, is, is questioning, you know, making sure that this, this parents can participate in and offer and find out what their needs are to determine a need is what the board is asking. Determine the need before you ask for approval and certainly that we don't want a blank approval.
Okay, so, so what you're saying is basically taking this next month to survey the parents and come back in for September? Is that what you're saying? I'm not sure at that point they have one already.
School has started. School has started.
We, we can't delay because school has started and some parents, you know, uh, the park and rec is not there now. So we gotta have something.
So we're going from zero students to thirty-six students and I do understand that that's a starting point, but it's, it's better than not serving the students at all. I would. But I'm saying they're not offering the program. I mean, if, if we don't approve this, then the alternative until we shop around something else is zero students. And so what I would like to see personally is at least it being offered. And definitely I have faith that um, Mr. Bell will work with her to make sure that the needs of the students and the parents are met at the school level, at the local level. Um, Dr. Lewis, I would also ask, you mentioned earlier when we talked about the funding, federal funding that perhaps um administrators and teachers would be able to apply. If there's a third of the kids that are on free and reduced lunch, I would like to see something available where they can apply perhaps and get some assistance. And in that way, I know that's a totally different conversation, but that way you would at least be able to meet the needs of those kids who really need it but may not be able to afford it.
I think Reese Row had a solution for that if you wanna follow up with Reese Row. Um, but let me ask you a question, Ms. Lawson. Is this something that's prohibiting a parent survey going out tomorrow?
But a survey is not gonna give me a dollar commitment, but I'll be.
But uh, we're interested in the interest in the needs of the parents.
And so, the thing about it is.
People told us they asked if there was gonna be a parent.
That we were not hosting something onsite and that we had um, these listed providers block. What, you know, most of the time the question changing is parks and rec. We called parks and rec, but they said, call y'all. We don't think they're doing anything. No, I mean, we don't have that. We're working on a plan now after the school year started and that was where we were, or pre-planned, no, a week before. One of the teachers came back is when we were at the uh, get this together and do. So the time that I worked on it, we built to, you know, the leadership team of the school, the admin team of the school, we sat and built. What can this look like? You know, are there other providers out there who do this?
Would you, can I ask you, I'm, I'm, I'm sorry to cut you off, you really need to get into our, our, our work. Would you um get with the other schools and look at their parent survey that went out and send out something similar?
Who, one was most recently done. I don't think anybody's, maybe.
Well, you said you worked with Hannah, um, the principal from Hannah. I mean, can you?
Yes, ma'am.
Keep going, keep going. They all use the survey.
But that's not the problem.
Oh, she knows how to do a survey. She knows how to do a survey.
I did survey.
She doesn't have a problem. She just, they just present to her, it's awesome to do a survey. So Ms. Lawson is a person, she's been doing surveys for, she knows how to do a survey. So she, Ms. Green was asking, can you get this survey out as soon as possible? That's what she said. Maybe as, as in tomorrow. Now, my thing is that when, when you get the survey out, in terms of being locked into that thirty-six, if you have a very, very high number of students, of, of parents who wants um, who want, who want, a high number of, of parents who want their students um after school, in the after school care.
We will conduct a survey starting tomorrow.
Then you may be able to rethink, rethink your program in terms of maybe the cost, you got a whole bunch of people. Maybe the cost can come down or you may be able to revise the uh, the program where it may be more affordable to more people. And I want to get back to what you said when you said, I said something about determining the basic need. And then your response was, you're, you did that because you had to, you're, you determined that your basic need was to host something onsite. Now, in education, we're educated. When somebody gives you a project, even though they have given you a project, you still have to develop plans. You have the project to do. You just don't um, with that project. You just don't make up anything. You, it's thought out and you develop a plan for the project. So when you say you were given just, you had to do something, then the something has to be based on, on um, you, you have to make a real plan. I know you made a plan, but when you say that, that was your immediate need, I'm just saying, you, you, it had, everything has to be thought out. All right, Ms. Green.
Thank you, Ms. Lawson.
Thank you, Ms. Lawson. And, and like I said earlier, thank you so much. You know, you put your work in it, your uh, your leadership team. It's a very good program that, what, when they did it. It's just, the only thing that, that was thought about here was just that thing of how many people can be serviced in the program. That's it.
All right, and the, and the cost. Four point zero two, Ms. Buckner, is pending still?
Uh, four point, four point zero two is uh.
It's still pending there.
Okay, still pending, okay.
So that concludes our, our group.
I have a question about four point zero two. Um, is it pending because we haven't received information or is quarantine?
It's embargoed.
It's embargoed.
Ms. Tillery?
Ms. Tillery?
Ms. Tillery, we're coming up on our policy committee. How are you? Looks like you're back on mute, Ms. Tillery.
I'm listening, yes. I'm pulling it up on my other computer. Okay. Can you hear me now?
Yes, ma'am. We're ready for five point zero one.
Oh, I'm sorry. I was supposed to introduce it. I didn't see that. I'm sorry. I'm not feeling great today. Um, I would like to introduce five point zero one, new board policy GIA, teacher evaluation appeal. Um, based on feedback from the July board session, we have sought counsel with HBS and Orlando Line for the GIA policy for your consideration. Attached is the red line version and public file. We have attached the file version, red line.
This is the first time this has been, is that correct, introduced or is this?
It's gonna, it's gonna be on the table.
It was, it was introduced in July, so it just had.
So we're voting on it.
Yes.
All right. Thinking, Ms. Tillery, five point zero two.
Can you hear me?
Yes, ma'am. Go ahead.
Are you there?
We can hear you fine. Go ahead.
Are you on?
Yes.
Ms. Tillery, since you're under the weather, I'll go ahead. Um, five point zero two is the revised policy G A R H. Employee leaves, leave of abs, and absences. Do we need any further clarification on this?
I know there's been a lot of back and forth emails, but the change that I asked and the attorneys asked for is still not in this policy. Which change are you referring to? The one, the first sentence that says that two days will be given for the death of the, a member of the family. We have talked extensively and the attorneys agreed that we need to define that member of the family.
To be consistent?
No, just to only be a few more categories other than the immediate family. We can't just say family in general. Um, it's too broad. That is, my apologies. We did make that change. I, we, because we've been updating it so often, I probably uploaded the wrong final version. Uh, but the email from today does have the agreed to language for the non-immediate family to be defined by nephew, nieces, aunts and uncles. Um, so that is in the final and I could.
So you'll, you'll put that up for next week's vote?
Absolutely, absolutely. But it has been accepted based off of today's um conversation. Um, and Mrs. Smith from Hobble Smith also agreed that we were gonna move forward with the defining of non-immediate family member. Okay. And I saw the change was, well, that's what I was kinda confused because the change was made under, you used to have accumulated sick leave, but then I didn't see the additional. But yeah, if you can just get that draft to us, that would be good. Yes, the um, I, I emailed it earlier, well, later this afternoon, um, and I put today's date on it. So the one that was uploaded um is probably the one from last week. But um, we, we will definitely get you that uploaded for the box. I don't, I don't have access after it's, it's completely uploaded. Like I said, I saw one of the changes was made that was pointed out today, but then the other wasn't. So I just wanna be clear that we get all of those changes. And again, it's not just me. I mean, the, our attorneys have said we needed to make the changes. Yes, we agreed with the changes requested. Thank you.
All right, so it'll be ready for next week's vote.
Absolutely.
Thank you very much. Item five point zero, are there any other questions on it? All right, item five point zero three is the revised policy GIA complaints and grievances. This has also been on the table thirty days.
Um, no, so this is, this is the first time and it came up because um GSBA's proposal for the GIA policy. There was an exclusion language in GIA that um apparently would have contradicted the process for teachers who are in their fourth year or upcoming fourth year. So in order for the policies to be consistent, they asked us to remove that one piece of language under exclusions. So I'm, I am requesting in order for us to move forward with GIA to um uh waive the thirty-day requirement if possible so they could both um go forward at the same time.
That would seem to make sense if they're.
It's already, yeah, it's already, are there any objections to waiving?
No.
All right, thank you very much. We will make sure that it's listed on the, um, on the agenda that we're waiving it's all. So, all right, next is five point zero four. Board policy FE, facilities and project planning.
This is related to CTAE.
Okay.
This is new. Needs to sit for thirty days.
Okay, this new policy is created to ensure that all Muskogee County School District facilities meet the requirements to serve persons with disabilities as dictated by board policy BDC. So we'll carry it over to the September meeting. Next is our discipline committee, which has uh no items. And that moves us to property committee, Ms. Chambers.
Okay, there are only two items under the property committee. One is seven point zero one, which is the museum report. And that report is attached. I will not read it to the board members. And seven point zero two is the library report and it is also attached. And that concludes the property committee.
I'd like to ask a question.
Go ahead.
Um, now, um, and it, um, I was reminded of this when I talked to Mr. Syper when um I was asking him how, how we service uh kids who are at home. And he brought, brought up that uh, a lot of kids um use the library's homework uh program. Uh, if, if possible, um, um, can we get a report on how many kids in general, the trend or average kids use your homework, homework program?
About two to three hundred a month.
Two to three hundred.
Depending on the month of the year.
Okay, is that, uh, do you figure that that's the, uh, are we getting the maximum benefit? Because, you know, I think we ought to be advertising that more because he was telling me about uh, Mr. Syper was telling me it was a good program. They have uh specialists in different areas that could help people. And it just seems to me that um, now, I don't know, is that, is that, is that good, the two hundred? Can we get more benefit out of that? How can we get maximum benefit? And we as a board, we should be promoting that, even if we, when we get this a month with a report, we can say something about it for a rare month.
How can we better promote this?
Uh, the more people who use it, the less it costs me per use, but that's not the point. The point is the more kids who use it, benefit it and do better in school. Um, we, we try advertise these sorts of resources all the time, but the best, the best way to propagate that is word of mouth. It's one student telling another student. Every student uses the resources. Survey it then. We generally have more than ninety percent of those students who use it. We generally have more than ninety percent of those students who use it to say that they like it and recommend it to somebody else. I just want them to tell their friends.
Can we place the link on each school's site, Mr. Butler?
We're gonna help you.
Thank you, we appreciate it.
Here's that, uh, monthly library report. Is, um, Chambers, we might mention something about, you know, make some kind of speaking.
Yes, that would be great if we would add it to the agenda perhaps, and then that way, or either as a presentation, so we can talk about if that particular information was not in the library report. But, um, yeah, if we want to discuss that, maybe we can add it to the agenda next time, so this day. But yes. Sounds good, the more kids we can get homework up to, I agree, the better. But yes, perhaps, um, that will be, we can do a presentation on that, so we all know.
We could do one of those about once a year with all the resources the library has, but, but, yeah.
Sounds perfect, thank you. Any other questions about the library or the museum, board members? Okay, hearing none, that concludes the property committee, and I'll turn it back over to you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, personnel committee is next. Eight point zero one, the superintendent is recommending a Ms. Alicia Lawrence to serve as director of communication for the Muskogee County School District. Her resume is attached. Are there any questions? Hearing none, eight point zero two is the reelection of certified personnel for F Y twenty-two. That list is also attached. We'll be voting on it, um, next week. Eight point zero three is our monthly personnel report. Attached, you'll see the resignations, retirements, and a report for new hires. Are there any questions?
I have questions.
Ms. Butler?
I have one of those items I want. Uh, that superintendent was the status of our director of, uh, construction. Where are we in that?
Still in the process.
And what does that mean?
It means just that, we're still in the process.
And what does that mean, are we, um, still advertising or are we?
Reviewing all the applications.
Okay, so, so we have, we have closed it? Have we closed it?
Yes, for now, yes.
Okay, so we've closed the application process?
Yes.
And now you're?
Reviewing, yes, yes.
And I think my eyesight was right, that Mr. Goldberg's leaving us?
He will be retired, we're waiting till next week to do that in our official action, but yes.
I thought it was retiring, I should have said it that way, not that you're just leaving us, that you're retiring, but I just didn't want it to go.
He's the ones.
We do that during our actions, you know, next week.
All right, that concludes the personnel co, report, construction committee, Mr. Cantrell?
Thank you, Madam Chair, moving to nine point oh one, the renovation Veterans Memorial Middle School. Board to contract an amount of six hundred thirty-five thousand, five hundred and thirty-two dollars to Ben B. Gordy Construction for security, bandroom expansions in the Veterans Memorial Middle School. Three bids were received on Wednesday, July the twenty-first, twenty-one, for renovations, safety, security, and the bandroom expansion to Veterans Middle School. Ben B. Gordy Company Incorporated submitted the lowest bid. Any questions on that, ladies and gentlemen? Okay, moving down to our next one. Nine point oh two, the school weight room expansions. Board to contract the Thayer Gray Construction for weight room expansions at Carver, Columbus, and Northside High School Project and approve the revised budget. Four construction companies picked up plans, but only two bids were received on Thursday, July twenty-second. Thayer Gray Construction submitted the lower bid of one million, seventy thousand. The bid amount exceeds the December fourteenth, two thousand twenty board approved amount for construction. This is to approve contracting Thayer Gray Construction LLC. Any questions on that, ladies and gentlemen? All right, we move to nine point oh three, Jordan Vocational High School Parking Lot Project. Board to contract a war grading company, approve the revised budget in the amount of one hundred ninety-one thousand, five hundred and thirty-three dollars for the handicap accessible parking lot at Jordan High School. Five companies expressed interest and picked up plans for bids, which was received on July the twentieth, two thousand twenty-one. War grading contractor is the only company that submitted a bid, the bid amount of one hundred eighty thousand, thirty-three dollars is over the February sixteenth, twenty-one board approved budget. Any questions on that? Move to the next one, nine point oh four, construction status report. I believe Mr. Goldberg has a presentation, some pictures of things going on inside of our school district.
I do, thank you, Ms. Cantrell, Dave Goldberg, chief of operations of facilities. Go to the next slide, please. So, uh, we, we've been doing the flybys of the Otis Spencer Stadium. Uh, the stadium's coming along great, we, we have the normal delays at all, the construction, um, companies are seeing right now, steel is hard to find. Um, so here's the flyby, you can see that the field house has come along, except we don't have steel for the roof. Um, so it's kind of sitting there right now, they're working on it as much as they can. You can see that both parts of the home side and the visitor's side have been raised up, and we're working on concessions and bathrooms on the visitor's side, which is closest to the road. A lot of grading's been done, and, um, we're moving along. The project's coming along great, we're real happy with, uh, what's going on with Freeman and Associates and the work that our team has done with this. Um, it's gonna be a great project, I can't wait to see the finished project. Everybody's very, very excited about it. So as you can see, we've got almost forty acres cleared out, and most of it's being developed. You know, the rain slows us down, then we pick it up and slow it down, pick it up, so things are moving well. Any questions about that particular project?
On the side, what, what, what are those, um, footprints?
The side close to the road? Though that was a concession stand, bathrooms for visitors' side.
Okay.
Okay, so the next slide you're seeing, uh, you'll see a few slides, um, for the Jordan Vocational High School, the C T A E project. Jordan, did I say Jordan?
Yeah.
I'm sorry. You'd think after six and a half years I'd say Jordan when, uh, well, I've been looking at Jordan sneakers for my daughter for her starting school, so I got Jordan in the head. Yeah, so this is a shot of the, the culinary cafe, it's coming along very well, it's gonna be really nice. Go to the next slide. Um, this is one of the renovated classrooms. Go to the next one. Uh, this is the construction lab, I know it's kind of hard to tell, but it's really come a long way, a lot of paint, a lot of changes have gone along in there. Um, so we're real happy with what's going on with Jordan High School. Um, there's a lot of really small spaces and it's kind of cut up, so it's kind of hard to see, but, um, as we move forward more and more into the projects, we can see these spaces, the culinary space and the construction space, the new welding labs, the automotive space. It's just going to be so new and attractive.
When, when these projects get completed, especially at Jordan and maybe, um, the athletic, um, sports complex, could we do like a, a board tour to see it?
Absolutely.
Because I agree, Jordan's hard to see in pictures, you really need to walk through the building.
It is. Thank you, yeah, it's coming along great, we're real, we're real pleased with it. Can you go back one more slide, I think? Or did I, oh, yeah, so we're, yeah, two more slides, actually. So the Forest Road, um, erosion project, you know, we're real happy that this is fin, finally happening, because, you know, Forest Road was about to fall down that hill. Um, it was really getting undercut under the slab. Um, if you've been back there, I know Doc Lewis went back there a couple of days ago on Friday when we started school, and he was like, wow, this is really something back here. I say, yeah, it's, it's why it was so, it's expensive, it had a price tag on it, but very well needed. We appreciate Mr. Velas and his team working with us, and Mr. Odom and his team working with us. Um, it's gonna make a huge difference back there behind Forest Road, so we're excited. You can go to the next one, you can see the wall that was built. Um, you can see the handicap ramp that's gonna go down to the playground, so it's gonna be AD accessible, it's gonna be the way it should be in the first place, so we're, we're happy about that. Next slide, please. So here's the before and after shots of downtown elementary school. We still have to put the baseball around, but they finished up the floor this weekend, took a picture. On the right this morning. Um, so these huge, huge, um, changes at the gym at downtown elementary. We would love in the future, on down the future, maybe with the next slosh as it comes around, to see all the elementary schools have gym floors and basketball courts and goals, so, um, they can use the gyms that way. But we really love it, we like the product, um, so we're real happy with it. Next slide, upcoming projects, um, you just looked at the Veterans Memorial Middle School band expansion, um, the weight room expansion, and, um, the middle school athletic fields. So we also have the Matthews four classroom addition coming up soon, and the Columbus High School exterior project coming up, so, um, and obviously, the big one, the replacement of the new elementary school for Dawson and St. Mary's. Um, hopefully, we'll be showing you guys some, um, some renderings of, uh, the new elementary school here in the next couple of months. Um, it's gonna be really beautiful, I'm really excited about you guys seeing it and the community starting to see it, so we can start sharing those things with the community and build that excitement for that new school, so. Um, as always, next slide, please, next slide, please, we thank our citizens, uh, for supporting this slosh. Um, you know, I've been involved with it two thousand nine, two thousand fifteen, and two thousand twenty, and we've got a lot down. We've got a lot down with the slosh, maybe we can't do it without it, so thank you to the citizens. Thank you, board, I appreciate it. Any questions?
Yes.
Um, have we started meeting with the parents that attend, um, St. Mary's and Dawson?
Not yet, I think Doc Lewis is talking about, you know, September, October, probably October.
We have to set those up for, um, September and October.
About another one more than that.
Yeah, we gotta look at transition, we have to talk about name of schools, color, mascot, all those things have to be taken care of, so. That's a difficult task.
Yes.
Name of school, color, mascot, a very important difficult task, so, yes.
The other question I had about the facilities plan, um, when was the last time we updated that?
Our facility's plan goes to twenty twenty-three, so it's only a couple of years.
They've been at Columbus High School. It's every five years, right? To answer the question, every five years.
They're gonna replace the front steps at Columbus High School, is that part, part of the project?
Front step, landscape, that whole corner, so you can actually be on Cherokee and see the school. Um, cleaning the outside of the school, making some safety and security enhancements at the front of the school, all the gates that go around the school. Um, renovating the inside of the school, we're looking at, um, finishing up the furniture replacement there, um, working on the floors, painting walls, so a lot of stuff's gonna happen over at Columbus High School.
So much good stuff happening in school district.
It really is, you know, I'm really proud, going around Friday and this morning, um, seeing parents, kids coming into schools, really seeing a huge difference in the way our schools look and feel. It's really, it's really, um, satisfying, it is.
Any more questions for Mr. Goldberg?
No, just to say, you know, the pictorial is really helpful to help citizens to be able to see their slosh dollars at work and to realize, as, as we've done since, um, we've been so fortunate from the state legislature to ask for slosh, to, that promise is made and that promise is kept, and that we're listening, and, um, bringing forth the projects that better serve our students and, and provide an environment that's conducive, not just for learning, but also for working. And so we cannot ever say thank you enough, if people are tired of hearing, uh, saying thank you to the citizens, we're gonna continue to say that, because we are truly grateful.
And we thank everyone for their patience, too, because it's just like every other industry, getting materials and finding workers is tough to do on both counts, so in some cases, uh, we're seeing petroleum-based projects, things like that, they're going up in costs, and time to get it in here has been very frustrating, but we're gonna stay up.
Yeah, you did a good job, Madam Chair, it's all for construction.
I want to make, uh, one point about what, um, I hope we said that to Goldberg. One point that was over to, um, when he said, uh, that he went around to some schools and noticed that, uh, how kids seem satisfied to go in their schools, and that's so important. You know, where kids can go in a place where, uh, that there is safety, but a place where they feel good about where they're going. And I think that's what we've done here in Muskogee County, in all areas at the county. Kids can go in their schools and, uh, be satisfied. All the schools have been updated, and, and like Ms. Green said, we thank, um, uh, the citizens of, of, uh, of, uh, Muskogee County for, uh, trusting, uh, Muskogee County with their, uh, children and with their investment, so that we can have these things done.
Thank you, ma'am. Ms. Williams, finance committee.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and when we do the tour of these facilities, please include the citizens slosh committee, because they have worked so hard on all of these. So for the finance committee, you have nine items before you. Ten point zero one is under purchase exception A, which is your bids in quotes, and this is, um, these are the bids from, uh, the state sheet and those that are already set. Um, you have, uh, Qualtrics, which is data, data analysis software, you have P S A T testing material, um, some discovery education equipment, and, um, digital instruction. Are there any questions on any of these four vendors? Hearing none, I do have one question, on the, um, data analysis software, what, what, what is that measuring? It's on the Qualtrics, it was one of my questions, perhaps I didn't get it on. Somebody before next, oh, there you are. Well, Mr. Al.
I'm here.
Sorry.
Patrick Goff, Director of Research and評估 Assessment. It actually, um, it will be used for all kinds of things. Um, it, it is a, well, we used Qualtrics this past year as a survey tool for, um, symptoms for COVID nineteen.
Okay, that's where I remember it from.
Yeah, and so as a part of that also, though, there is a statistical package that comes with, with Qualtrics and some other things that are available, but mainly we're looking at it for data visualization tools. So really, initially, what it'll be used for is us, um, looking internally at metrics that we're tracking, trying to get schools actionable data points that sort of, sort of filter out some of the noise and help them sort of visualize data quickly. Um, eventually, what we'd like to see happen in, is expand its usage so that they can actually start to do some analyses and relationships between different data points and things like that. But it also has some outward facing interfer, visuals that we can use, um, with the public and things like that, so as those things are fed in real time, down the road, not, not just, down the road, what we hope to see is, is, um, having the data quick available for the public or for parents to launch the school websites and see sort of real time metrics and things like that, but again, that's, that's kind of down the road. Um, we're starting initially with just getting actionable data points visualized in a way that helps, uh, building leaders and district leaders make efficient decisions.
Thank you, thank you, Ms. Williams. Any questions for, takes ten, ten point zero two, purchase exception D, renewals. Two items before you, one is for valley healthcare, and one is for presidio, subscription and leases, are there any questions? Seeing and hearing none, that takes us to ten point zero three, this is exception F, under invitation to bid R F P. You have six items before you that includes payment repair solutions, uh, rec equipment, roof repairs, library system ground maintenance, um, a truck that we desperately need, an eight-foot truck, eighteen-foot truck with a liftgate, and a Kubota mini excavator. Sounds like someone like Green, so would like to get his hands on. Are there any questions on those six items? Hearing none, seeing none, that takes us to ten point zero four, exception G, this is your professional services, you have three items for various, um, federal programs, include healthcare services and behavioral health, uh, services at Marshall. Are there any, especially for speech and occupational therapy, under, um, the, the one program. Questions? Seeing and hearing none, that takes us to ten point zero five, this is your monthly sole source and volatile purchases, however, this month you will only see Apple devices on ten point zero five. Are there any questions there? Takes us to ten point zero six, this is your purchase order increases, uh, most, uh, I think there was only one item, and that was for repair and maintenance of your library system. Any questions? Ten point zero seven is, um, your new budget, this is covering, I think, all of them, I looked at every one of them. I looked at every one of them, and I don't think any of them are not CTAE related. This is something from a while ago, but I know you have a chance to look through it. Any questions? That takes us to ten point zero eight. This is monthly budget adjustments. Any questions on that? Hearing and hearing none, that takes us to my favorite, ten point zero nine. We have a PowerPoint on that we'll be putting on our website showing our eighteen donors this month for a combined effort of over twelve thousand dollars in donations to public education from companies and clubs. I noticed even a principal is on there, and we thank everybody, even our individuals, PTAs that give to support public education in our various schools.
That concludes our report, Madam Chair. Ms. Chair.
Yes, I just have one question, a general question. How are we doing on school psychologists and things of that nature? I see we're still sort of outsourcing some of that, so are we still short in that department? How are we, how are we doing?
Yes, we're, excuse me, we're still short, and I believe we're a couple short, two or three, but I'll have to double-check those numbers and submit that to you.
Okay, sounds good, and so we're making up for that outsourcing.
Correct, okay.
Any other questions? Thank you, Ms. Williams. I know Friday was the kickoff to the start of school, and today everybody went back. Dr. Lewis, you wanna give us an update?
I do. I was, had the pleasure of going out Friday and seeing our pre-k through sign readers. The big topic of the day was their new shoes. They all wanted to see their new shoes, and I was very proud to be able to stay out there enjoying and seeing that. Then today we brought the rest of the students back and visited thirty-two schools between Friday and Saturday and just really had a great time, and, you know, I really miss that from, you know, the whole year has felt really odd because we, for a year there, we didn't have really a graduation, and then we just one big blur, but today and Friday it just really felt right to be back in school and see interactions between kids and teachers. Kids were excited to be there. I almost saw one crying, and that was a parent of a pre-k. The kids were fine. But all that said, I do want to talk about, just very briefly, I know there are a lot of opinions about this, and I want everybody to understand where I'm coming from on this mask decision. This is not something I take lightly. I think it's really important for people to know that, and it's not something I do in a vacuum. That's why I put the medical panel back in place back in, I think it was about April of two thousand twenty, and have continued to defer to them, because they're the people who are not only reading the studies, but they're the practitioners in the ground. They're the ones right here in the community, so I take everything from the CDC, the AAP, all that under advisement, but then it's filtered through our Department of Public Health and our practitioners, and I think that's important for people to realize. Another, something else that gets somewhat lost in this is, yes, we believe, or the medical people believe that masks are effective in stopping the spread. Why is that important? Well, we may have students that may not get as sick, although we're seeing those numbers go up. The important thing to remember is, that sometimes gets lost, is continuity of operations. It is imperative that people understand that if we have someone who is testing positive, whether it be a student or a staff member, we have to need to go into a contact tracing mode that could then identify another five, six, eight, ten people from that exposure or more. Just think about one high school teacher, on average, they have potentially a hundred and fifty contacts in one day. Culinary, our bus drivers. We're down fifty bus drivers, not unlike school districts our size all over the country, that are looking for bus drivers who, you know, many of those bus drivers are of an age that they're susceptible and leery about getting on a bus, and I certainly understand and appreciate that, and it's a hard enough job on a good day without anything faced here. But the one thing we've got to do is remember, if we want to keep schools open, that is one of my primary things, is trying, now we've got kids back in class, to try and keep them there, and all we need is to have an outbreak, a linked outbreak in the school, and not have to make decisions along with our medical folks and with our risk manager, Tracy Fox, who has just been amazing throughout this whole experience, and all the folks that are out of the school responsible for tracking and monitoring this. And it's important for people to recognize that if we have a linked outbreak, it might mean closing a wing, a class, or an entire school, or possibly multiple schools, depending on interactions of families and so on. So while the individual is important, and certainly always, I understand, there is concern about their child either because they want the mask or don't want the mask. I understand that. I don't have the luxury of trying to pick and choose which one this affects individually. I have to look at the whole picture and operationalizing our system on a daily basis. And I have a friend who's a principal, and he opened up on Wednesday and closed out on Thursday. Big high school, and all because he had a hundred and twenty-eight students test positive. None of them really, really super sick, but it doesn't matter how sick they are, they were exposed and they came in contact with others. It ended up causing, with eight staff members, ended up causing, that's not our choice. When they're identified, we have to invoke those protocols that require us to quarantine staff members, students, and the like, so I just want to make sure everyone understands this is not something I do in a vacuum, it's not something I take lightly, but it's about trying to keep us open and functioning, and I think everybody can appreciate that. I hope they can.
I do have a question. What, do we know what person the director employees are vaccinated?
We do not. We are going to be having another vaccination clinic. We've already had six vaccination clinics.
I was just thinking, there's a lot of people hearing more about the Delta area and not vaccinated people.
Anybody, I just, I'll just, again, everyone has their own opinions about vaccinations, too. All I can do is please talk to your medical provider, be informed, and then make a decision based on what your medical provider, don't listen to friends and neighbors and internet and all that stuff. Talk to your medical provider and make an informed decision based on that. I think we've all heard that, but I just, that's, what I'm told is, that's our best way to try and mitigate this virus from spreading or worship mediating to something that would, we might talk about the T, the worst thing that happens is mutate to a point that this renders this vaccine ineffective, so all that said, I've learned way more about this than I ever wanted to know, but please know that it's something that's critically important for all of us to understand. It's not just about individual children, although that's important, it's about operationalizing and continuity of operations in our school system to keep schools open and safe.
Dr. Lewis, I think one of the speakers mentioned today are asked where, can they get information on the numbers and things of that nature? Are we, I know at one time we were getting the emails, but is that on the website somewhere?
We have not started those weekly reports, but we will again.
Okay.
Yeah.
And you'll, is that on the website somewhere?
It'll be on our website, and then the media typically reports it, and also you can check as far as our individual numbers, but then you can check on the Department of Public Health as far as what the numbers are, there's all kinds of metrics there. The other part about this, too, is, and you're talking to medical folks, other considerations, it's not just about the positivity rate and all that, it's also about hospital capacity. Those are all things under a multitude of factors that go into making some of these decisions that are not as simple as a single number. It's about ICU capacity, it's about, sometimes it's not even about the number of beds in the hospitals, it's about how many nurses do you have to man those beds? So it's a multiple, multiplicity of factors that go into this, and again, I'm going to yield to the medical experts and the practitioners that right here that I have the highest regard for, that are actually in the field and have got years of experience behind them, so I, again, I just ask everyone, please consider all the factors, and I know everyone is concerned about their one particular child or children, and I understand that, if it were my grandchild, it would be, too, but I'm looking at what we can do to try and mitigate the spread and keep our schools open and functioning.
All right, thank you for the update. Again, we want to say welcome back, and we're excited to have the best year ever. We do need a vote to go into executive session for a personnel matter. That's a motion second on the favor raised in hand. We're going into executive session. Thank you all for attending.